All right.
Yeah.
That's better.
Perfect.
Okay. All righty. So, what, which, um, one do you want to start with today? The nondiscrem or the other?
Um, Dr. Reed, can I take you through? I know we got, we received four, um, legal alerts. And the first two are related to, um, of course, the, um, House Enroll Act, related to childcare. Um, and, and we're, oh, we're fine with those. But I wanted to take a look at the legal alert regarding, um, web content and the mobile app accessibility. Uh, I just want to make sure that I'm reading this accurately, where it says that school corporations with populations of fewer than fifty thousand have until April twenty twenty seven. So they are speaking specifically of the school district, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all righty. I just, that's what I thought, but I didn't want to assume that they weren't making reference to something larger.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I have-
Any others?
Um, no, I've spoken with our IT, uh, person. And this, these two legal alerts, as it relates to the technological piece, we, we've already started working on. The other one, we, we have pretty much six months to make sure we're, we've got everything in order. And we don't have any reason to believe that we're not going to meet that, but, um, we're well on our way with both those two.
Okay, good.
Um, I, past practice, we were just going to go in order, which would mean that we're with, um, zero, one, four, two, election and eligibility to serve.
Okay.
Um, it's-
All right.
It's my understanding that this is an update based on, um, the partisan election requirements?
Yes.
And on page two, I believe that's where the additional language is, regarding what that will look like. And now that there's also an age difference from twenty-one to eighteen.
Yes.
Okay.
They drop that down.
Yep.
And they will, that you'll have to add your political party, your candidate. I never thought that was important, but that's the law now.
Okey dokey. I, a- any questions regarding, um, these updates, ladies?
No, I was familiar with the law when it passed. Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I think it makes sense for us to be in compliance and to update our policy to reflect that.
Yeah. Okay. All righty, um, the next one, Dr. Reed, is, uh, zero, one, forty-four point one, compensation. And this one is directly related to, um, the law that went into effect, um, Senate Act two eighty-seven. Um, and that's the annual payable amount that board members can now receive.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, um, can't exceed ten percent of your lowest, uh, starting salary of a teacher. And you can have a per diem, um, not exceeding the rate approved by IPS, Board of Commissioners. And then your reimbursement for expenses, um, when incurred in the performance of authorized duties, uh, supported by receipts. The only thing, um, you can't, um, you can't get reimbursed for your entertainment or alcohol should you be going to a conference or a special dinner.
Yep.
Which has always been the case.
Right. Um, so for reference, ladies, we, we have A through G checked. With letter D, we stop after the word, um, approval. We do not have the line, "No post-purchase voucher shall be approved." So we stop with, um, pre-purchase approval is given by the board. If so, approval is not permissible or feasible, a voucher shall be submitted to the board for approval.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
In letter G, um, the date, the number of days is sixty.
So can we leave it as it is, or do we have to add that?
No, we don't. We don't have to. We, um, we left that off in our previous. Um, and G is sixty days.
Sixty days.
Yes.
So, okay.
And maybe you could change that on this one.
Yes.
Sixty days seems fair.
Yeah. Um, Dr. Reed, uh, zero, one, six, seven point two is executive session.
Yes.
And the page two is where, um, you see the additions of this particular policy, specifically related to, um, topic items, discussion items.
Yes. You can also, with this, you may discuss your healthcare options, um, special exceptions for coverage. You can, um, discuss the employee handbook changes. Traditionally, principals will give the board those changes in the spring to start in the fall. And you can now look at those in, uh, executive session. You can review the negotiations on the performance of publicly bidded contracts. When, uh, the public knowledge regarding the review would cause a likelihood of increased cost. And you can discuss how you would solicit for proposals of that, uh, for those contracts for goods and services. And then there are some specifics when it is proprietary data, trade secrets, or other information contained in the bidder's proposal relating to the bidder's unique method of the business. So that is to protect people, um, who have some very, um, specific practices, and they don't want to share with other businesses because of the competition they've created, if they want to keep it. And then, um, the public knowledge regarding the discussion would reasonably be expected to result in a private loss to those providers. So you can now include those things in executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Dr. Reed on that one specifically?
No.
It's a second session topic.
We do have the last one checked, too.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those, those two.
Um, the first actual policy outside of the bylaws, Dr. Reed, is thirty-two, twenty point zero one. And, um, this is a revision based on House Act ten, zero, two, specifically related to the tag grant or the teacher appreciation grants. The update pertains to the parameters that are now in place for the tag grant.
Right.
And the requirements for it.
Yes, um, you're not going to be able to allocate to anyone with less than two years of service. And, um, this stipend is not allowable for collective bargaining, which means, um, you're not going to take this to the table. You're going to, that money's going to be separated. And, um, in addition to the minimum salary or increases in the salary set. So you can't, um, supplant that money. You can discuss, of course, with your certified employees, um, about how you might want to distribute this. But, um, you're, you're going to distribute all these stipends from a, from the grant to individual teachers within twenty to sixty days of the date the IDOE distributes its grant money. And then if you don't distribute it, um, you're going to have to return it by June thirtieth.
Um, at the top of the, um, policy itself, um, the school board adopts a policy for the benefit of the school corporation's teacher. Um, in this particular line, ladies, I actually checked May. We have worked collaboratively with PCTA, or Teacher Survey, on how they wanted to proceed. May allows us to continue to do that, knowing that it may be different next year, instead of saying it's always going to be this way. So-
We anticipate that there will be changes coming again.
Is the specification for, uh, teacher with no less than two years' experience, is that here in the policy? Or is that from the law? Or is it from IDOE?
All the policy comes from the law.
Yeah.
We don't put anything in the policy that isn't within the law.
Okay, because I couldn't find it in our policy. I couldn't find that very specific fact. And I just didn't want there to be any confusion on my newer staff.
Gotcha.
Um, okay. So I just need a little help finding it, ladies.
Okay.
There it is.
Okay, I made myself a note, Ms. Barnes, so I'll work on it.
I mean, it looks like it might be in, um, A, under distribution of annual teacher appreciation grants. But it, it doesn't say what Dr. Reed just said.
Yeah.
It says something slightly different.
Okay. Okay.
Now, there, this has been a hot-button policy for many different school districts. Larger schools seem to have less problems with it than the smaller schools because, um, you can't identify more than twenty percent of your certified teachers. But there's not enough money in, let's say, small districts. Don't get enough money, um, to even do the twenty percent. So how are you going, if everybody, if you have twenty percent of your teachers that qualify, how are you going to select those? Subjectively.
Okay. All righty, I've made myself a note, Ms. Barnes, to dig a little bit.
Thank you.
Already, um, thirty-two, twenty is a revision. Actually, I went in, in the wrong order. I should have gone with thirty-two, twenty first. Um, thirty-two, twenty is staff evaluation. One of the questions I had for, um, so the revision in this policy comes from, uh, the move to remove and repeal the four categories of highly effective, effective, needs improvement. And that's directly related to the tag grant. Um, so that's, um, the update here. But I wanted to draw your attention to the first paragraph that's in green. This is an ad. This plan may be reviewed and amended, and there are two options, annually or as needed. That has not been, um, there previously. And so we'll need to make a determination of, um, when we want to review the staff evaluation, uh, process for certified employees.
I'm, I'm thinking as needed, too, only because, uh, we cannot predict what other changes might come our way with legislation. And we don't want to be stuck in something that's not in compliance. This allows us to be a little, uh, to be number in the space.
Yes, and I think, um, this policy comes, um, at a good time. Uh, we have, um, Dr. Dunley, who has been, um, given the task of working with, um, PCTA teachers to look at our staff evaluation process this year. And so that's going to be starting soon. So, um, I think as needed fits and allows that flexibility that you all want.
And are we also considering letter B in that as well?
And we have that currently checked in our current policy. I apologize. And on the back, if you all, just for your record, letter D, F, and G are checked in our current policy.
Okay. Is E eliminated? And then now we only have up to F?
Yes.
So all of these will just be relettered?
Yes. Yes.
Well, just F and G.
Yeah. Yes.
Not all, that's so much.
Yes. Okay, um, thirty-two, thirty-one is a revision.
Yes, and this has been, um, this is another one of those hot-button items because traditionally corporations have allowed teachers to tutor, um, after hours, um, after their contract hours. And now, um, they can't do that. They cannot, um, tutor for money. Or like if a parent wanted to, to pay for some tutoring hours. Um, they also can't tutor students, um, for money somewhere else if they're in their class. So if I'm an English teacher, and, um, I have a student that's just very, um, they're, they're just struggling in my class, and they need some extra help. And the parent comes to me and says, "Can you work with them individually?" I can say yes for no money. Or if the parent says, "But I want to pay you," you still, you cannot do it. You would have to get a colleague and another English teacher, too, to do that.
Dr. Reed, the, the one scenario that I am, I need some additional guidance on is, for example, we may have students that are on homebound. And our practice has generally been that one of their teachers assists them outside of their traditional contract day. And they receive a stipend for that. So where does that fall as it relates to this policy?
That falls in, um, just your educational day. Even though they are, it's after their contract hours, you have contracted with them for that because that student's not in their classroom.
Okay. Okay.
And the homebound is not at school, I'm assuming.
No.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, yeah, you're perfectly fine with that.
Okay, I just, that's the first thing that popped into my head as it relates to that. Um, and I just, um, wanted to make sure I, that wasn't going to be affected by this.
Yeah. Yeah, that is a part of their job.
Okay. Okay. This is one that we will definitely want to make sure that we share with teachers and that they're very clear on the change.
Yeah.
So that, that-
Absolutely.
Everyone's aware, yeah. Okay. I have to admit, this was one that, as much as we keep up with new legislation, this is one that I did not, it didn't get, it was not on my radar.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not supposed to give any personal feelings with delivering these policies, but, you know, I, I have thirty-nine years in public education. And most teachers, um, did, you know, a good job of managing that. Nobody took advantage, to my knowledge, of anything like that. And, um, it's just, um, to me, it's sort of a big brother thumbs on you.
Well, I think we've got, at least from a district, we have some, some parameters in place to support our students during the school day. And then we also have after-school programs that, that are on school property with our teachers, um, that may be tutoring, just in general, whether it's their student or not. So I, I, I feel like we've got some supports that this is not generally something that comes up. I just thought about it just from the sense of a homebound standpoint. Um, but I'm not necessarily sure that we're, we're seeing a lot of that in general.
Yeah. Well, because you're, you are a large district-
Yeah.
-with resources.
Yeah.
And you can, you can access grants or your general fund to pay those teachers for those extra hours. For those extra programs. Not everybody can do that.
Okay, all righty.
You are blessed.
Yeah. We definitely, we, we definitely know that, so, um. Forty-one, sixty-two is the drug and alcohol testing of CDL holders and other employees who perform safety-sensitive functions. And this is a revision. And it's, it's my understanding it was updated to comply with changes at the, uh, the federal motor carrier safety, uh, safety substance abuse policy.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, Dr. Reed, I have written this down. So it's the English teacher in the, is, I guess it's a, it's an, uh, grammatical question. So when we take up the singular, his, her, he, she, and replace it with the plural there, um, like grammatically, it is incorrect. But is, is this leaning more toward legal?
Yeah, lawyers write this up. They're not always. That's why you get, uh, technical corrections from time to time because somebody that is a, uh, person who knows their grammar really well will say, "This doesn't, this isn't written correctly." And so if you would, uh, tell me exactly where that is, I will make a note and, um, put that into Neola for a technical correction.
Well, the correction is to take it from his and her and to change it to there. And so it begins on page two.
Okay.
At the very, the very last line of page two. And then it continues throughout the rest of the policy. So that, that I was, it, it's an inquiry. Truly based on my English experiences. And it pops up again on page three.
I don't know.
So I, I was just curious, I mean, if the, if it's written plural in the law and we're referring to one individual, I just was asking for clarification.
Yeah, um, I will have to, see, I don't have the pages printed out, so-
Oh.
I don't know their page two.
Okay, that's okay. So, um, looking at the policy itself, there are definitions. And the definitions are labeled A through H.
Yes, I have that.
Okay, then there's, uh, a larger paragraph that begins with the board.
Yes.
Then go to the paragraph after that, that is much smaller. And it says, "The superintendent shall establish a drug and policy testing program whereby each covered employee," so we're still singular, "is tested for the presence of alcohol in," his or her is crossed out, and there is replacing it. And that's the first instance.
That is APA Edition seven-
Okay.
-language for English, um, for like writing, um, a scholarly article. So yes, that is currently correct. They have changed his and her, she and he, to them or their.
With a singular verb?
And it does not sound right to us who were drilled, um, by English teachers for singular versus plural. But APA, um, which is the scholarly, um, writing guidelines, they were changed, uh, several years ago. And, um, slowly, Neola has started incorporating that into the new and revised policies that are written. And it doesn't, you know, I have English teachers for friends. They hate it, hate it, hate it. Some of the English professors hate it. But, um, but my students have to write that way. I have to write that way. And lawyers now have to write that way.
So is it my, is it your understanding, then, according to, uh, the APA, that it's, it carries a singular verb? It does not, we don't make the verb plural then in that statement. The verb remains singular even though the pronoun is plural?
Yes.
Got it.
But that pronoun is, is now neutral.
Got it.
Okay.
I'm gonna sleep so much better tonight.
If you, if you got your masters or your EDS or your doctorate before two thousand and, uh, probably two, two thousand and five. I can't remember when Edition seven came out.
That is a yes. That is exactly when I got my masters, so, yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, it wouldn't look right to you. Okay.
Okey dokey. Um, fifty-three, fifty is the stu- student suicide awareness prevention. Um, it, this is a full replacement, um, of what was the format of the previous, um, policy. And, um, for us, really focusing in at the very bottom of page two and all of page three and four are the new aspects of this particular policy.
Right.
Uh, it looks like it's, uh, written in a way to help us with the training aspects of the law associated with this plan along with the, um, statutory requirements for the corporation.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, it, it, it is just a general, um, framework for you to, and you can, um, add whatever else you want. But we want to, we actually, um, worked on this back in August. This, this was done primarily by another Neola consultant, actually, my husband. And, um, and then the lawyers took a swipe at it to make sure it was okay.
Okay, um, ladies, on page three, then the second paragraph is, "The corporations shall have a written memorandum of understanding with," and we have, um, two options. Right now, we have, uh, MOU with Cummins Behavioral Health. And we've been with them for, gosh, thirteen, fourteen-plus years.
Right.
Um, so I think the question that I actually have a note to myself to ask Mr. Jacob is, is, does Cummins fall under a community health? Or is this, I, I know they're state-certified.
Right.
So, um, do we-
Yes, you, you, that is perfectly okay.
Okay. Okay.
You are, you are within your rights to contract with them ever.
Okay.
As long, as long as they're certified.
Yeah. So the next paragraph, "Information regarding suicide prevention services in the community can be found-" So the next paragraph, "Information regarding suicide prevention services in the community can be found." Where, what are you all's thoughts regarding that? Um, on the corporation's website and by contacting the school counselor in any school corporation? One of those, at least one, needs to be selected.
I would hope that our school counselors are armed and equipped with information that they could share with parents in an incident. I think putting it on the website makes it accessible at all hours. So I certainly lean towards both instead of just one, because not everything happens between seven and three.
Ms. Kelly, you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, I was saying both, yeah, we need to vote.
Alrighty.
Do we have something there now?
So I looked on the website, it is, um, it needs more, more. There is something there, but it, it, it needs more. And so I will work with, um, Mr. Jacob to provide additional resources to what is there.
Is it possible that we can at least put the National Crisis Hotline number on there?
It's there.
Okay.
Yes, that is what is there.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yep. Alrighty, the next, um, paragraph is, "Further information regarding crisis information." Excuse me, "Crisis intervention reforms available to students, parents, and corporation employees by contacting," which one of those, so you've got school counselors, a school social worker, student support services at the corporation's central office, and we would provide, um, a phone number there.
Does each school have its own social worker?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then for employees, I don't, I don't know that an employee would be comfortable speaking to a colleague? So did they get their inform, I know they have flyers, I know they have a number to call, and we have that service. But what, did we put that number here? Is that the central office number?
Um, past practice has been that they have reached out to Mr. Jacob's office.
Okay.
As he becomes someone that's not directly in their, um, building.
Right.
He can provide, um, the contact information to provide additional services.
Do we need to put a layer in front of him in case it's someone in this building who is his colleague, who may be struggling?
Um, I, we can certainly put the direct line for, um, the number itself. Um, but it would bypass, um, the central office piece, if that makes sense. Because in essence, they're just calling a resource line.
Rather than, what's the other option? So if they call, what do they get, what are, what do they miss? What do employees in crisis miss by not contacting Mr. Jacob's office?
Um, well, depending on what their scenario, so we've had ser- a couple of scenarios where maybe a principal is calling for support for a staff member, and that call generally goes to Mr. Jacob in his off, in his office or his, um, administrative assistant. Based on what the needs are, it may mean that it's a phone call to Chief Castro or it's a phone call to, um, the therapist in another building that doesn't make direct contact with that particular person because of the colleague aspect. So there are multiple roads that we can go, depending on what the situation is that's occurring.
Okay, and then for, I, that makes sense, so he's, he, in his office, what he's doing is he's basically kind of managing and directing. So then what of, what about the employee who's here? And there is no principal here.
Yes.
So if someone works here in this building, who do they go to?
So depending on the situation, that generally falls on HR.
Okay.
Um, there have been situations where HR has helped guide that.
Can we add that? Or is that, um, Dr. Reed, what are your thoughts on that? Just to add in HR as a number for a person in crisis?
You may want to put that in your, um, like in a guideline for your employees.
Okay.
Instead of having it in the policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Because that may change from time to time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so ladies, for, for my clerkish, do, so do you want to check, um, school counselors, the school social, do you want to check all three?
All of them.
Okay.
That's my opinion, all of them.
Ms. Kelly, you okay with that?
That's fine.
And then, um.
And that creates options.
And then we'll add, I'll speak with Mr. Jacob about what phone number that would be, Mrs. Floyd or his office, so that someone's always there to answer. Okay, I'll speak with him about the phone number.
Does it matter, Dr. Reed, if we put a specific phone number? Is that an issue?
Um, yes, because, um, you don't wanna have to go back in and change your policy if that person over works for you.
So what is your suggestion, Dr. Reed? If it, if we're checking student support services at the corporation's central office by calling?
A number.
Yes.
The phone number.
The only number that wouldn't change per se is the main line.
Right. So would that main line be answered, or would you get a, a robocall to select a menu?
No, it's answered.
Again, many districts don't do that. Um, but I, I always make sure that when, when we were open, phones were answered by a live person. I would put your central office and then just make sure that those who answer the phone at central office would know exactly where to call.
Okay, and then should we add on our voicemail system then, um, some, some way for that person in crisis who's calling after hours or lunch or whatever to, to get them somewhere to some kind of help?
Yes, 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 I would do that. And, um, that, and I think that's why we added, "In case of emergency, dial nine-one-one or immediate assistance."
Oh, I see what you're saying, so don't put it on the voicemail?
I would put, I would put yours on the voicemail, but in your, you know, when that voicemail comes on, um, you know, I would make sure that, you know, they call, they say to call nine-one-one as well.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
If it's an emergency, they, you know, if they're contemplating suicide right then and there, um, voicemail may just enrage them.
Yep, okay. Alrighty, I have my notes. Fifty-four sixty-two, Dr. Reed, we do not have this policy. We have a, a pretty established process at the high school for retaking classes. So when this came around the last time we discussed, um, the process, but we do not have fifty-four sixty-two.
Okay, and you don't want it?
I don't believe that we need it. The process itself is, is, at the high school, has been in place for a decade. Um, and it's pretty sound in the retaking of classes process.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, sixty-three twenty is a revision, and, um, it's directly related to updates in Indiana Code.
Yes, and, um, it, 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 the changes that were made were made to comply with the local public works projects. So, um, that's, that's why the, the changes do exist.
And that's the, the beginning portion of this policy. It's in green, and it, it shares what, what comes about. That's the only, um, change is they add, because of Indiana Code language.
Makes sense.
Right. Yep.
And we already have all this selected up there.
Yes, yep. Yep, so it's, but for example, the, it is the policy of the school board, and that the director of purchasing is the title that we use.
Pretty straightforward.
Um, seventy-four forty point zero one, um, is the electronic monitoring and recording.
Yes, the purpose of this policy is, um, to promote safety, security, and protection of the corporation's property, students, staff, and visitors. It's to deter unauthorized access, vandalism, et cetera. You can have monitoring equipment, I'm sure you do already, on corporation property and buses. May be used in the common areas such as hallways, entryways, offices, gymnasiums, cafeterias, libraries, parking lots, and buses. Um, not permitted in the restrooms, locker rooms, unless authorized by the superintendent under extraordinary circumstances. Uh, may be used by security personnel or authorized employees for job-related documentation. And signs must be posted at your entrance to notify individuals of the monitoring. It, this policy complies with FERPA. You can't intercept private communication unless one party is aware, and that comes from the law. Um, and any, uh, recording with personally identified student information is protected under FERPA, so it's, it's not to be shared with anyone except somebody who has the authority to see that. Do you have any questions on this one?
I don't think so, Dr. Reed, and honestly, because we just recently revised it, um, in July of twenty-five, so it was pretty, I mean, we, we spent some time on this.
Okay, yeah, alrighty.
Alrighty, seventy-four fifty-five is the accounting system for capital assets. This is a revision, and I think it, the re- revision really is, uh, just updating the correct department.
Yes.
And that's on page two?
Yes. Yeah, pursuant to the State Board of Accounts, Department of Local Government Finance.
Yep.
That's the only change.
Yes, ma'am. Then seventy-five forty point zero two is a revision. And this one is in rela- connected to the Department of Justice provisions that, um, have changed based on ADA requirements?
Yes, uh, for accessibility.
Yes, and so I connect this policy to the legal alert that we know we're, we're working on to make sure that we are ready to roll with the accessibility piece.
Yes, yes, this policy goes hand-in-hand with that legal order.
Yep. I, I spoke briefly with our, um, IT personnel regarding, for example, the website and, um, some of the requirements are in there, and he feels like we have been working towards this. And many of our vendors and, and things, because of, uh, the requirements are, are in compliance too. So he does not feel that this will be, um, as large of a task as I initially thought it was. I did feel a little bit of panic, but he called my waters, so.
There, there are so many things that you, those of us who don't have a disability with technology, we don't think about, but, you know, putting photographs on website. A person who is blind can't see the, what's on those photographs, so you have to add a caption that they can scroll over, to say, "This is a picture of, of students, plus, you know, of, of team player holding a basketball," or something like that. Even little things that we wouldn't think about have to be addressed.
Yes.
Can't put PDFs up there because readers won't read PDFs.
Yes. On page six, ladies there, I need your feedback on two different areas on page six and seven. Um, on page six, it talks about regular audits, 'cause that's part of the requirements, is auditing our, um, website design, et cetera, to make sure we're in compliance. So the first question is, uh, related to, um, the auditing itself. This says that if we choose the audit shall occur, we can add that, or we can not add that and go down to option one or two to, um, make an audit determination.
Let me make sure I'm following right. So the first is, we're choosing a time period to have these regular audits to make sure that our materials, our published materials are compliant. I do have a question from, in reading this, it was challenging to be able to tell if this was just, uh, digital content from the district or if this is even classroom content in our, in our classrooms.
So that's a discussion that I had with our IT director, and it's everybody.
Okay.
Everybody, so if, for example, I'm a student in a teacher's class and, and that's, that interaction is very different than if I'm sending something out into the world. It needs to, it would need to be able to be ADA compliant.
And maybe this is a question for another day, but then how, how are we training our staff on this? Because there's things, "Oh, I've used this for three years, it's, it's been working great, but now it's not compliant." You know, what I don't want is for us to stress out our educators. I don't wanna push them over the edge. Um, not saying that you're on the edge, I, yeah, that's not an assumption. But I just don't wanna, I don't want to unnecessarily add something to their plate while at the same time, I am, I, I get this. I'm a classroom teacher too. And so I too have to be really sensitive about things that I send out. Just wondering, where does that fall in this? If we're kind of locked into a regular rotation, does that help us? Or does that harm us when it comes to trying to train educators and/or administrators or whoever is putting this information?
Well, there's a training piece that, that we're gonna take a look at too, that, that I think can give us some flexibility. And correct me if I'm wrong, um, Dr., I totally lost my train of thought as I wanted to read, Dr. Reed, the, the sentence and then call your name at the same time. But under regular audits, when it states that this audit shall occur, there is an open box. We do not have to check that box, correct?
You, um, you don't have, you, you don't have to check that one. But you have to, you can select option one or two.
Yep, yep. So we could not check this audit shall occur, Mrs. Barnes, to open up the flexibility. But we would need to take a look at option one or two as it relates to, um, how we would handle documenting the audit. Or if there is a problem, if we do audit, how we would go about taking care of that. So one of these needs to be checked.
Right.
That makes sense.
Towards option one. Because it gives us more specificity, and two is very vague to me. It doesn't say when things need to happen. We still have flexibility with one, but it's more concrete.
I like one as well, because it it is, it's allowing us to put a stipulation for our vendors. We don't own a lot of these apps, we contract with companies that provide our apps and our tech. So we need them to be compliant for us to be compliant.
Right.
So under option one, it says the audit must be documented, that's a check. And then the second potential check states and include compliance assessments, report assessment reports, identify accessibility barriers, et cetera, do you want the second half of that portion also checked?
Who would have to provide these compliance assessment reports?
I would surmise that um technology would take the lead on this, and working alongside our navigation specialist.
Okay. Are we, are we putting again on, are we putting extra extra on them to be able to do this, or is this standard operating procedure? Is this something they always do anyway?
It is not.
Okay, so this would be something new.
Yes. Yes. I think in our initial conversation um yesterday with the IT department, is the understanding that we know that we're gonna have to audit everything.
Yeah.
Um and honestly, that audit is going to be new to us, because we haven't done it necessarily in this way and for these reasons specifically. So the documentation process, of course, is going to happen in its natural state, because we're gonna need to know, this page has been checked, this page has been checked.
Right.
Um so those parameters are going to take care of themselves. I'm not necessarily convinced that we would create a remediation plan with specific timelines. Does that need to be a a separate document in the sense other than we knowing that this is not accurate? We need to take care of it, because we know we've got a timeline of April twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, yeah, twenty twenty-six.
So um.
And then a plan going forward to continue the like maintenance of it.
Yes.
I just don't want it to get lost, that is, that's my concern. It's not, and the fact that we have some kind of system in place, so that we just don't have this deluge of data falling on our IT department.
Right.
And they're in the weeds while they're trying to figure this out, because I think this is a good thing. Um I think it makes sense, it's absolutely inclusive of more of our community members, which I feel like that is where we're trying to go. We're trying to walk in that direction. It's, I I just don't want to, I don't want to saddle us up with something we can't handle, but I do also want to make sure that we're holding our vendors, they're free to the fire, like, and we are not going to continue to contract with you
Yeah.
and put this work on us for your product. It's your product, you fix it.
Yes.
And then we'll decide if we're gonna contract with you or not.
I I think it there is no question that we've discussed that we are going to have to start. We're gonna have to create a process to envelope not just the the district website, but all school websites and all of what how we communicate with families. And I think we have to be very um structured in that process, because we we are going to have to audit regularly. Um and there's no reason to start from scratch every single time.
Right.
And so I think that's one of our first, is to create and kind of figure out what that process is going to look like and who are, who is going to be involved. Um because it 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 is going to in some way, shape, or form have to involve, each building has a webmaster.
Right.
Um that is going to need to provide some level of support, I'm not sure how extensive that would be, but we would need to involve them.
Okay. So that leaves us with the big, we know we want option one.
Yes.
We just, the audit must be documented, is really where that would end if we don't check it, correct?
And I think we need to include the timelines in vendor compliance. Because we're auditing, that's gonna be something that has to be checked, and then, like you said, if they're not in compliance, well, we can't use you.
I feel like it's, we need some some stopgap, something in place where we're not continuing to have to fix problems on others. And I just don't think we need to take on that responsibility. So is the other option, the option two that's directly under that, if problems are identified through the audit, such problems will be documented, evaluated, and if necessary remediated within a reasonable time period? So that's the one that's just a little less constricting, and is that correct?
I think so, um it it's pretty broad, and you know, you're going to document, you're gonna evaluate, and you're going to, if necessary, remediate um the concern within a reasonable amount of time. So it it's less specific.
I see that, so I'm changing my opinion. I just kind of, after our our brief discussion about it, I do like option two, because we do have that room to figure it out, and and this makes us pay attention and be intentional all at the same time, not just within our own, but also with whom we contract. Even though it doesn't say vendor compliance, if it's not in, if it's evaluated and it needs to be remediated, that remediation may not be something we have to do.
Correct.
It may be something a vendor has to do. So that's that's mine, I'm an option two person.
Thoughts on that, Ms. Kelly?
I still feel like no, I don't want undue hardship, however. I don't want it to get lost either, in the like the reasonable time period, well, what is that?
At this point, I don't know that we know how long it would take to correct.
Right.
You know, how how long does it take for the programmers to recode something and make it work?
Or if we have to find a replacement.
Or, right, if we have to find, are you saying replacement vendor?
Right, whatever, to remedy whatever it is.
Like, I don't know.
What is a reasonable time frame for that?
What is a reasonable time frame, I don't know.
It's not, it is not going to take your tech people that long. There is software that you can purchase that will tell you exactly what's accessible and what isn't. It will tell you the percentage of accessibility of of your website. Um and then you can just correct what, it evaluates your product for you. You don't have to go in and check everything. It does that, and then it it will tell you what is not in compliance.
Um, Dr. Reed, what what is your thought process on option one and two, if you don't mind sharing?
The only reason I would choose one over two is that it does have vendor compliance status. So that you could say, our policy prohibits us from continuing with you unless you're, you can prove you're in compliance, accessibility compliance. That's the only, that's the only thing.
And if you're gonna keep us as a as a contractor, then you need to fix it.
Because all your remediation plans with specific timelines, you set the timeline, so that is your choice of how long, you know, are we going to get the everything fixed within a year? Are we going to have all of, all every online, everything fixed within a year? Uh is it going to be six months? Um you you know, you have to rely on sometimes your tech department to tell you what's reasonable.
With the initial deadline.
I see, because on this policy, it says plans with specific timelines, but the timeline is not listed. And what you're saying, um, Dr. Reed, is that the IT department can, we can defer to them for best practice for a timeline that is reasonable.
But the initial, the initial audit has to be done by spring?
Um, we need to be in compliance, I believe, by April of twenty twenty-six.
By spring.
Yeah, okay, thank you for clarifying that, Dr. Reed, I'm back on option.
Okay, alright, you got it.
It's okay.
Um, so there is a another letter E deals with the training question. And there are there is a line that says a corporation will provide, and our choices are annual or periodic training for its employees who create the web content, manage the website, select and contract with technology vendors, work on online communications, and then we would need to make a decision on um one or two on what that training would cover. So the first question is, um how often would you want the employees to receive training, annually or periodic?
You said periodic, it can be whenever training is felt, rather than saying, oh, we have to do it every year. If we don't need it every year, we don't do it, but periodically say, oh, we do need that.
Um.
What are your, what are your thoughts?
I was, I immediately thought, I don't know, can I say specific vendors on camera? Okay, so I know we currently use an online video self-paced platform for this type of training, how is that, is that generic enough?
That's generic enough.
Okay, and I I immediately thought of that particular group providing that particular kind of training, along with all the other things that we just want to make sure everyone's aware of and keep it fresh. So I I lean more toward annual, but I see the benefit of periodic as well. There's nothing to say that something like that can't be quarterly or a test-out option. Or even an option where, okay, we told you this, and yet, you know, you you did not comply. And so here's some more training.
If you chose periodic, that could, periodic could be annual.
This is true.
Right, because it.
Period leaves you open to whenever you decide.
We can decide at the beginning of the year, and then if things aren't going well, we can decide to do it again. In a different way.
That was mine.
I like that.
Alrighty, so then that takes you down to option one or option two. One, in my opinion, is very, it it's more detailed in regards to what the training would cover. Two, um makes reference to the policy and responsibilities associated with it. In all fairness, I'm not convinced that someone's gonna go look to see what the policy is. Option one gives you what the information is, um it's a little bit more user-friendly than option two, in my opinion.
And if they want to know, well, why are we considering switching vendors, classroom teacher? Because this vendor can't provide us with these
Right.
A through H.
Right, they don't have that capacity, and so.
We had to pick a vendor that does, so you may have to learn a new program, and your students may, in order to give your students a better experience, we need to.
Option one for me.
Option one, alrighty. I think we covered everything in this one, Dr. Reed.
All right, so we go on to, there's just a technical correction in eighty-one twenty-one.
Yep.
Because we just did this one.
Yes, yes, yes.
I still, my question, and I don't know now where it would be, or if it's in here, or if this is even the right in regards to the work-based learning.
It's not in this one, that would be under the curriculum.
You know what I'm getting at, okay.
We we spent some time talking about that, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yep. But to to your point, um, Ms. Kelly, I don't want you to not think that there, even if it wasn't in that area specifically, if you take a look at um on page four, under the paragraph starts with each contractor and subcontractor. So to me, that could envelope folks that, students that went out, and you'll you'll see that we currently have checked arrests and the filing of criminal charges there, so that we're gonna expect that that is done prior to.
Students, employees, or whatever, that's, I still have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is mine.
Alright, Dr. Reed, sorry, I I wanted to make sure I found that.
That's okay.
So that, um eighty-four zero five, it's, I think it's also a technical correction.
Yes, it it's actually just a deletion and addition to um an Indiana code.
Yes, it's the very back, I was like, oh, okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Easy enough.
So then that moves us to eighty-four fifty-two, and this is all about the AEDs.
Yes.
And um
That was last center, we went over those.
They've changed some language. They've added, they've added that it has to be clearly marked and accessible, and talks about the training requirements, the maintenance, and um that your building principal is in charge of the management of the, their building or venue's specific emergency plan.
Um, on page two, ladies there, is letters G, H, and I that are new. Um, there's a question on whether we would include them in the policy. Um, I can tell you that our AED system, um, Mr. Bruber oversees, and he actually contracts out with a company that does the upkeep for our AEDs. Um, so um just as a point of reference for that aspect of it. Um, currently, because this is, this is new, we just implemented the the action plan, and the coaches and the performing arts folks telling their students, we currently do not have scheduled drills with them. We just made sure previously that we were sharing the information where the AED is, and sharing that information in general with them. Um, so we'll just, you all can tell me how you'd like to proceed as it relates to letter G, H, and I.
So we already have a system in place for the maintenance.
We do.
So we really don't, to me, G is not as crucial. The drills, I don't know, is that?
I don't know.
We do safety drills for everything else.
Um, we do, we we do have fire, tornado, um
Intruder.
Intruder.
Right, and if we're on the stage or on the field in the middle of, I mean, the only way you do things is rehearse. I mean, you know, as you rehearse, you know, this is where it is. If we're in the middle of the stage, how far is it from the stage, how far is it from the field, how far is it? If we're in the middle of the stage, how far is it from the stage? How far is it from the field? How far is it? From wherever I'm at.
Yes, um, by, per Indiana code, it, it needs to be within three minutes.
To be, it already have, there's already guidelines for that.
Yes. Both H and I.
I did a scavenger hunt once, um, a year with um, new teachers. On where they were in the building, the different buildings. They had to, to, to find them, take a picture of them. And come back, you know, after.
Coaches and.
After that, so that everybody knew. I will tell you that I have a student in the seventh grade. Who fell over in the hallway. And the PE teacher was walking down the hall, saw this, immediately ran to the AED. And um. He was saved. And the, the emergency room was um, less than a block from our school. And the doctor there said if they had not used the AED, he would have died before we got him to the emergency room. So. Most of the time, these sit on the side of the wall and drop dust. But boy, when you had to use one and it worked, then it's almost like a miracle.
I mean, what I saw this. Past year was um, a- as, as a parent of someone who has a fall sport at the high school. That information was covered at, um, with the girls specifically, um, so they knew where the equipment was. Um. But to your point, Ms. Kelly, we drill everything else. Um, you know, is this uh, an opportunity to potentially at least require at least one drill with them? Where they would go through the process of knowing what to do.
Yeah.
Cause periodic doesn't mean, it's not like fire drill has to be every month. It's not like other drills where it's a time, like if we say it's per, it's up to. Periodic can mean anything.
I'm wondering if we keep G and H, and the reason for keeping G is to make sure. In my mind, that it continues to happen. We know we're already in compliance with G. This ensures. We're gonna stay there.
Right, continued compliance.
Just continue, so it's not any extra than anyone has to do. And um, as far as H and I, I almost feel like they're kinda the same, but. But less robust on I than H.
I don't think we need, if we have H, I don't think we need I.
I don't think we need I if we have H. Um, and H gives some flexibility with the coaches, that they can schedule those whenever they'd like. Even if it's during a parent meeting or just whatever. I, that's my opinion, is we keep G, even though, G and H, and then we just don't have I.
That makes sense, that makes sense, yeah.
Good, good, G and H is. Alrighty, Dr. Reed, eighty four sixty two is a revision. Um, deal with an immediate, uh, report, uh, direct, immediate report, I should say.
Yes, child abuse.
Yes.
Let me get on that one. Uh, you have a new paragraph. As always, a staff member um. Has to report it and then they have to notify the building administrator. Who has to document it and confirm that DCS and laws, and law enforcement received it. Um. And it's also your volunteers are, even though you don't pay them. Get the, you have a volunteer coach or any volunteer, some, someone on a field trip, a parent on a field trip. They need to know that it's their responsibility to.
Yes, when I saw that piece of it, Dr. Reed, I made a note to myself that we will need to revise. At the information that we share with families when they volunteer to chaperone, right? Or they volunteer to do anything for that matter. Um, so that we're very transparent about what the Indiana code is.
Yes, and then um, the person reporting it and um, anyone else. Must notify the superintendent after they report it, so make sure the superintendent gets that information.
We currently have a system in place for that, um, so that um. There is clear communication on, on those types of situations that involves the superintendent and our uh, chief of police.
Yeah. Do you have any questions on this?
I do not, Dr. Reed. I, I think that paragraph kinda hits what, what, what the changes are.
I don't have any questions.
Um, Ms. Kelly on the backside and Mrs. Barnes, um, A, B, C are checked. And on both, on the backside, just for your reference.
Okay.
Um, I believe we're on the last one, Dr. Reed, good, goodness.
Yes, and it's just a technical correction, which we will to show.
Yes, a technical correction.
And uh, taking out the Florida administrative code rule, that was a goof. And someone, the attorney who wrote this, um. Had been also writing some Florida guidelines and for policy and. Um, instead of state law, they had put Florida administrative code rule, which doesn't apply to Indiana. But the rest of it is will and shall.
Okay, um, ladies, do you have any other questions for Dr. Reed?
I have one.
There you go.
Can you, so I know there's a difference between will, shall, and may. Can you maybe put it in order of commitment? Like, it's.
Will and shall are basically the same. Shall is just a, it seems a little more forceful.
Okay.
You shall do this.
Alright.
Or I, I will do it, but I might do it on my timeline.
Okay, so.
Shall, I have to do this.
I'm gonna.
As to me.
So, I'm gonna parrot it back.
Really, it really means the same thing.
I'm gonna parrot it back and then we'll see.
When lawyers get involved.
So, shall is like ten commandments, you shall not kill. Will is like me at the altar with my husband, like, I do, I, you know, will you marry her? I will, will you marry him? I will. And then may is like, hi.
We might do it, we might not.
Bye bye.
May gives you that will and shall.
Okay, okay, and will is a commitment for sure, for sure, but like you said, there's.
Shall's a little more forceful.
Shall is very forceful. Okay, thanks.
Any, any other questions, Ms. Ms. Kelly, anything? Alright, Dr. Reed, you know, we always appreciate the time that you spend with us and the guidance that you give.
Yes.
Um, if we do not speak with you before the end of the year, happy holidays to you.
Oh, wow.
Thank you, thank you, thank you to you and, and next update, I will be live.
Yay, you'll be moving around, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, we'll take it easy.
Alright, thank you.
Bye bye.